Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 23rd City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, thanks. Okay, Kristy, your call please.
Beerstead.
Here.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes from the October 9th Regler and closed session meeting minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have the approval of the bills with Mr. Page.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the bills, the amount of $793,237.61, subject to the comptroller.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, before we get to public comments, I just want to make a quick, I'd like to welcome Troop 9054 here tonight. They're working on their citizenship and their community awards, badges, I should say. So, welcome, guys. So, that means you gotta pay attention tonight. Okay, next we go on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say, talk about, now would be the time, come on up. Is there anybody? Yep, come on up.
Good evening, I'm Barry Hammerbeck.
Barry, could you please sign in?
I did.
Oh, you did? Where are you headed? Sorry.
I'm not on this list, though. I signed something. I hope it's not fatal.
Oh, that was...
I thought I'd just come in and say hello tonight. As many of you know, I'm running for Assembly in the 30th District, which covers all of River Falls. I've been an attorney here in town for, I hate to say it, but a little over 40 years. Went to work with Les Gaylord when I first came to town. Went to law school with Steve Goff, so you know how old I actually am. I decided to run because, as my wife said, you know, you can't complain about things forever. You've got to do something and get in and try to make a difference. And I think one of the models that I'd like to follow is River Falls. I think River Falls has a great and cordial discussion about governmental things. I think River Falls does a great job at resolving issues, and I think it can do it without rancor. I don't believe that we've had a loud enough voice in Madison. I've felt for all of the time that I've lived here that western Wisconsin, and particularly Pearson-St. Croix Counties, gets left out. There are some major issues that I think we need to deal with here, and I can start through the list, but one that strikes home is emergency services and Chapter 51 commitments. I think we need to do something to change the funding arrangement for that, to change, to make it better for people that have mental health issues, to get prompt treatment that's closer to home and doesn't cost us so much. It's ridiculous for us to have to send people to Oshkosh to do that, and I intend to go try to make a difference in that. I'd like to have our tax dollars spent more responsibly, and I'd like to make sure that we get our fair share here in River Falls, Pearson-St. Croix Counties, and particularly those things in District 30. I hope to be available if elected. I'd like to meet regularly with all of the constituencies and establishments here, and I think if we all work together here in western Wisconsin, maybe somebody will finally listen to us in Madison. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the audience? Yep, come on up.
I signed in too, but not on this one, so I'll just sign that as well. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Carrie Fireholm, and I'm running for Pierce County Clerk of Court. I have over 15 years' experience, over attend in St. Croix Clerk of Court where I had extensive training, cross-training in all the various case types. I was in court with Judge Black, and came over to Pierce to be the Judicial Assistant with Judge Bowles and Court Commissioner Gavick, basically to get a deeper understanding of the statutes and the court system and the law, and I believe that will only help me serve better as Clerk of Court. I have remained up to date, though, with the Clerk of Court, work directly with them, work on the same computer system, get the same updates, so I am up to date on all policy and will be ready to go. So, thank you. Have a good evening, and I do have flyers with information. I can either leave them with Kristy or hand them out.
You can leave them with Kristy.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else in the audience? Yep, come on up.
I did as well, but I'll re-sign it here. My name is Michael Norman. I'm a retired professor of journalism from the university, and actually, I'm here to say thank you to the council for something that's coming up later on. Fifty years ago, it's kind of surreal, I was among the handful of college students under the direction of Dr. Lauren Robinson, who put WRFW on the air. That was in November of 1968, 50 years ago, seminal year. Dr. King assassinated, Bobby Kennedy assassinated, election Nixon-Humphrey. So, it was an amazing time. So, we're very thankful to the City Council for recognizing that 50 years ago, in a couple of weeks, we went on the air. I think it's also very appropriate, because from the very beginning, the radio station's mission was to do campus and community programming. Radio signals don't stop at the end of a campus. They don't just go off into space. People listen to them wherever they are, and so what we tried to do from the very beginning was to emphasize news and public affairs. If you remember 1968, you could hardly read about Wisconsin, because you couldn't get a newspaper, no TV signals came here. We were the isolated counties, and we'd like to think that we had something to do with changing that. 1989, we became an affiliate with Wisconsin Public Radio. They're a western Wisconsin station now, so you have access to all that good programming. And we're very thankful that the City Council is recognizing it with a proclamation, making November 3rd WRFW Day in River Falls. I'm not sure what that's going to be composed of, but we've got some fun things going on. So, thank you for doing that, and I look forward to your voting on it later on tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? No? Okay, we'll move on. Oops.
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick comment. Actually, it's a thank you. This last Saturday, the local Rotary Club went into Veterans Park right downtown and spent some time in there cleaning out the leaves and the bushes and cutting some things back, but I want to give Mike Stifter from the city a thank you. He gave up his Saturday morning in the snow to drive a city truck down there, and I think we made three trips or four trips to the brush pile of stuff we cut back. There are other Rotarians in the room, but I wanted to specifically thank Mike, and there were some folks from the Second Street Gardens that came and helped identify what was a plant and what was a weed, so we didn't pull out the wrong thing. So, it went well, and thank you, Mike, for that help. It was a Saturday that you didn't have to give up, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Okay, next we'll move on to a report from Planning Commission. I think Brandy, Brandy's giving, Brandy is one of our senior planners, will give us a report.
I'm doing the wrong thing. PC. It's been, it's been a couple of months since I've been in this room. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having me discuss what we've done in Planning Commission for the past 10 months. As you recall, our Planning Commission is made up of seven members, including the Mayor and Alderperson Morissette. It also includes Susan Reese from the Park Board and four citizen members, Lisa Moody, Mike Woolsey, Craig Kinsman, and Bill Stiesel. The role of the Planning Commission is primarily to create a comprehensive citywide plan, and we lasted that in 2005. Other roles are to make referrals and advisory recommendations to the City Council. Statutory, state statutes callouts and those things that we can make advisory recommendations on, and those are annexations, zoning and map amendments, subdivision requests, recommendations on the boundaries and zoning designation in TIP districts, cooperative agreements, official map updates, and also citizen engagement. And there's been a lot of that in the past two years with the Kenny Quartera Plan. So, over the past 10 months, since January of this year, we've had several different types of activities come before the Planning Commission. So, back in January, we saw two annexation requests, one being for the school district property to connect out to Mann Valley, and another for the Apostolic Church that would have connected a little bit of land by Cemetery Road and South Watson Lane. That application was later withdrawn, so that is still a key piece of property in the city that could be annexed in the future. We also saw a code amendment, just one this year, for the fence ordinance. It was hopefully the last of that one that we'll see. Over the summer months, we looked at TID 13 and 14 plans, spent a number of meetings and workshop looking at the official map, and made some recommendations that'll come before you in next month's meetings. And then we also had some reports from staff. Amy Peterson provided a report on the housing assessment that was done, finished up at the beginning of this year, and then we had an intern give a presentation on all of the different gravel parking that is in existence in the town. So, there's actually a number of spaces, primarily residential, that have been grandfathered in that has, staff has been looking at options for potentially zoning ordinance amendments coming in the future. We'll see how that shakes out in the work plan, but we needed to figure out, what do we have in the, on the ground before we make recommendations for how to change it. We also saw some subdivision requests come in, so Villas of Sterling Ponds Phase 2 and 3, those are currently under development. We just completed rezoning, I think that was in September, for what will become the Sterling Ponds First Edition, and then South Point General Development Plan and De Sanctus Park General Development Plans came before us too, so those are still outstanding, that we are waiting for the final development plan phase. So, coming up, you know, the Sterling Ponds First Edition Final Plaid will be coming next month. There is a possibility of another presentation to Plant Commission for the 700 South Main Street project by Cohen Esri Group, and then we will do any additional work plan objectives as directed. So, that's it for this year. Any questions?
I did have one question. How many hours do you think you spent on that fence ordinance?
Too many.
Hard to say. Too many to count.
Yeah, you guys, a lot of inquiries, and I think I mentioned it before. We, I, for one, definitely appreciate all the time and effort that you and staff have put into that.
We appreciate that.
I know you had a lot of citizen concerns that came along with that, and you guys worked great with those folks and make sure that the issues are being addressed and brought before us, and that we can make sure that we're taking care of all, and you guys did a fantastic job.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Well, thanks, Brandy.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we go on to Powerful Choices, and Mr. Noreen will be here to give us a presentation.
Mike may hit on this, but as he comes up and gets us set up, I also want to thank Jason Roloff, our management analyst, for helping put this presentation together today, so thank you, Jason, for helping Mike with that.
Indeed. Good evening, everybody, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Noreen. I'm the Conservation Efficiency Coordinator, and I'm going to give you a presentation on Powerful Choices, our first 10 years. I want to give you kind of a bigger picture of how Powerful Choices fits into the city. Got the city logo in the middle, and the utilities connected to it. There could be a lot more green lines on this. It could be a big spider web, but I want to kind of keep it simple. Powerful Choices is below there. It is our initiative to develop a conservation ethic within the city. Up on top is WPPI Energy, our wholesale power supplier, provide us tons of support in a multitude of programming. On the right is Focus on Energy. Focus on Energy is a statewide program. It's not a state-run program, but it is statewide for, that offers programs on energy efficiency and renewable energy. And then to the lower right is Seventh Wave, and that is a research and engineering firm that we use, in particular for new construction design assistance, and if we get involved in large, complex projects, maybe, say, Minnesota rubber or something like that. So, I want to kind of give you the 10,000-foot view of where Powerful Choices fits into this. Our mission is to develop a conservation ethic within the community, and we do that through conservation, efficiency, and renewable energy, and this, this presentation will kind of show you how we go about fulfilling that mission. Well, first and foremost, we try to add value to our customers and our community. We do that through partnerships, education, marketing, awareness of opportunities that are available to them. Again, this is for residential, commercial, business, schools, nonprofits. One big thing we do to simplify it is we reduce risk. If business is weighing that option, whether to, to upgrade that expensive air handling unit, we, we come in, we help them with technical advice, incentives, help reduce the, lower the return on investment, and thus lower their risk, so they are willing to make that change. We stack success, and what I mean by that is when we do go into a large business, say, Magma Flooring, we do a project with them, we don't just end with one project. There's always more opportunities at these businesses or homes, and so we develop that relationship, the partnership, and the next thing you know, we have the trust, and we're working on a VFD or a motors project or a lighting project. So, stacking success has been very important to us in our 10 years. And then innovation, in this case. There's lots in the world of energy efficiency and utilities, there's, there's no shortage of innovation. Just to throw a couple of highlights out here, in your packet, there was, and I realize a lot of people don't have that, there's a very long list of different educational rebate community programs that we have done, but here, just kind of highlight a few with our customer appreciation events, with our energy educator in the schools, working with local businesses such as River Falls Theater, and then we have Sterling Ponds in there, and what we're looking at there, what I'm trying to show you is things like economic development, new construction design assistance. We are working closely with those businesses so they can build a sturdy, profitable, energy-efficient building right, right from the get-go. Funding always comes apart, always is in question. The Powerful Choices itself has, is embedded in the rates. You're not going to see it on your utility bill. It's the, locally, we, the money comes from River Falls. It's the $21,000. That covers one full-time staff, myself, and benefits as well as the major, a lot of programming. The state, one, the Focus on Energy, I'm going to just go back real quick. Focus on Energy up on the upper right. We are mandated as a municipal utility to collect funds for conservation, efficiency, and renewable energy. We send those money, those monies to Focus on Energy so we can have a full slate of programming, programming that we can bring back to River Falls, whether it's electrical or whether it's natural gas. I mean, we have, we bring it all, we have it all available to us. We're also required to collect the same amount of money for low-income programming. We do have the option here, whether we want to administer the low-income programming here or at the state. We choose to administer it here. I am the administrator of that program. The benefit to that, and it's quite large, is that if, by administering it locally, we're able to offer our customers twice the amount of money through bill pay assistance as if we were to send it to the state. We just don't have the, fortunately, we don't have the numbers of low-income customers here as, say, you know, some of the bigger cities, Milwaukee's and Racine's and so on. So, we certainly benefit our customers, our people of River Falls benefit by us administering these programs locally. And then the last one is reimbursement through WPPI. That for River Falls equates to $23,000. This is one that not all WPPI members take advantage of, but we, we certainly do, because we want to bring the programming to River Falls, and we use that money for such things, for Powerful Choices. So, when those funds are available, we are going to go get them. So, that's what we bring back, and that's the total funding for Powerful Choices. Go into a little bit of how that is utilized. This, what this is showing is, the, in the blue, is the money that we are sending to Focus on Energy annually, and that right now is about $53,000 a year. And the orange is the money that we're bringing back to the River Falls community in incentives through Focus on Energy. And so, we've had some great years. We've had some years that where we're not, what we're trying to get is $2 back for every $1 that we sent out. And since, it says 2017, should be 2007, we've sent $470,000 to Focus, and we brought back 1.3 million. So, this is just in incentives. This is not capturing, or just, we're not taking into account the energy savings that these customers are having, or the reduction in their bills. So, there's, this is a, we're very proud of the fact that we brought this money back, but this is just a fraction of the benefits to it. And the last part underneath there, it's in a little smaller print, but it's really important to note, is the rates have remained stable, the bills for our customers have gotten lower, and utilities has been able to maintain its rate of return. So, we're having great benefits, and everyone seems to be winning at this point. That graph below is, is an indicator of what we see for the new advanced metering infrastructure, the AMI, what customers are able to see on any, on any given day, how much energy they're using, what processes might be, might be costing them, or what, when to schedule their, their work. But what I, on this one, Powerful Choices, what it does, I think it helps us prepare for a changing utilities and a changing world through customer service. The advanced metering infrastructure, you'll be hearing a lot about that coming up, called AMI. Efficiency and renewable energy, competition, a regulated monopoly, but there is, there is always competition out there, and there's some environmental issues that Powerful Choices will help meet those, those issues. And with that, that is 10 years of Powerful Choices.
Questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I've got a couple of comments, Mike. I was, I'm glad to see that, that we've kind of spread out our, our grants in the last five years. The first five years were a little heavily weighted, frankly, towards public entities, but, so I like to see that, and I encourage you to keep moving that forward. I did also want to commend you on the return of, of the funds that you were just pointing out for Focus on Energy. What was in 2017, refresh our memory, that we got back 253,000? We put 53 in?
Oh...
That spike?
That one, Falcon Center?
Okay.
That was a big one. And it was, Sterling Ponds was still, was, we had TW. That one was captured. Winfield wasn't until this year, I think.
Okay.
Those are the, the large ones.
Okay.
And just to point out, with the Falcon Center, we were able to bring back 95,000, just by that center alone.
And they are one of the largest users, if not the largest user, is that right?
Yep, largest.
I get that, that we, that we're going to have some public monies, the school districts and the universities, they are the largest users of our utility, so that makes sense that it goes back, but I do like to see a balance between the other ones, and, and I would encourage anybody out there in the private sector who hasn't taken advantage of this, I'm sure you've knocked on every door you could, but certainly give Mike a call and, and come back in and take a look at the program, because it's a good program, and as you've demonstrated, we're, we're getting our money's worth out of what we send down.
Yeah, thank you.
Back in Madison. Thank you.
Hey, Mike.
Yep.
Kind of like what he was saying, I just received something in the mail today. Are we doing free and discounted energy devices through our utility with Focus on Energy?
We are. There's, I feel like I'm kind of a Focus on Energy interpreter, because they're kind of all over the place. And there's, because of our population size, we are considered rural, and because of a funding through broadband, we qualify for some, like the Free Nest thermostat and some other connected devices. Sometimes we have a say in what comes out. Sometimes this Focus on Energy sends it out, and it's a surprise to us, but we try to stay on top of all of those.
And that covers everything from like light bulbs, thermostats, all that sort of stuff?
Yep, yep, electrical.
Residential.
Right.
Gotcha. Yeah, this one actually was branded Focus on Energy, Exo Energy, which I was kind of surprised, because we're our own public power, and it was sent to my local River Falls resident, so I was just kind of curious how that was tying in there.
Well...
Comment needed. It was just funny, and that's why where the question came from. I knew you ran that program, and you offered the same stuff through that same Focus on Energy with Wisconsin, so.
Okay, well...
Appreciate all you do.
I'll take a peek at that after this, and...
I'll forward it to you.
Thank you.
Important piece there is if you do want to get a thermostat or light bulbs, call Mike, call our office, and Mike can help you out with that.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mike?
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Doing a good job.
Thanks.
Okay, next move on to the consent agenda. First one is acknowledging in the following minutes, the EMS Advisory Board from 8:06, the Park and Rec Advisory Board from 9:19, the Plan Commission from 9:04, the Historic Preservation Commission from 9:12, Utility Advisory Board from 9:15, and the Library Board from 9:10. Next is a resolution approving the weights and measure assessment schedule. Next one is a resolution regarding sale of surplus equipment in the city. Then we have a resolution regarding naming rights policy. This resolution would amend the city's naming right policy to include a section regarding memorials and tributes. And the last one is a resolution regarding the renewal of health and dental insurance for 2019. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Consent Agenda Items 5 and 6.
I'd like to pull 7.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the rest.
Make a motion. We approve Consent Agenda Items 4A through F and 8.
Second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Dowan, you pulled number 5?
Resolution approving weights and measures assessment schedule. I made an observation that QuickTrip number 453 on North Main was assessed on three, oh, four different dates, 11/30/17, 12/15/17, 4/24/18, and 4/25/18, and they make up a quarter of all the fees collected. I don't see that with other things in there that are comparable to it. I'm just curious how they came to that decision with the assessment with them.
This, we contract with the State of Wisconsin for the weights and measures program, and they decide who is going to get tested each year, and it's, it's interesting become, because some years, someone gets just many hours, many hours of testing, and this year, it was QuickTrip, and we don't know why. It's curious when you see that, everything that they tested, it's kind of from A to Z, and then where another larger business maybe gets one or two things tested. So, I don't have a good explanation, other than it varies by year.
I was trying to figure out if they were bringing new stuff in, and they had to weigh, like, new measures in when they brought them in or something.
I, I have the list of what they checked, and I mean, it's the donuts to the salt. It's just kind of amazing, but that's the way this... It's just kind of amazing, but that's the way the state does it is probably the best answer I can give you on that.
So, to Sean's point, what keeps it accountable on the state level so they're actually looking at things uniformly and not just coming in and railroading one versus giving the other one like a little pass? I mean, is there a standard that the state has on how they come in and do that?
Can't really answer that. It's the Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection. I hope that they're being fair to their customers. But I have noticed in previous years that it really does vary. It's, sometimes it's very even, you know, Dick's gets tested and then Family Fresh does. But it's not always the case of that, and this year it was QuickTrip's turn, so.
The council, just a piece of information on that. I mean, their charges in forcing weights and measures on a number of things, so, you know, I don't know if it's the case with the donut or whatever, but that if it's prepared food, they're checking the actual weights versus the weights on the packaging, they're checking every measuring device, so in a QuickTrip store, you know, they're checking the counter scale behind, they're checking anything they have in the prep rooms, they're check, in addition to, they're doing some more different kinds of pump testing that we've seen before, so they're doing, I don't know if anybody have ever seen one of them in town, but they've got equipment that has different size canisters, and so they're dispensing fuel, and they're matching, and so a QuickTrip on North Main has the most pumps of any station, so if they have a new test that takes 20 minutes per pump, it doesn't take too long for a store that has a lot more pumps to get a lot more time on it. So, just to give you, there is, if the question is, how do we hold them accountable for that? The city is holding them accountable by the fact that they're a state employee, and that they're meeting with the store, in almost all cases, they're meeting with a store manager at that time, and so if the store manager had some concerns, they have the ability to call the state or the city to complain about the treatment. We have had, it's been a long time, but we have had an establishment contact the city complaining about that, and we've, and the last time, I believe, we followed up, we were then provided with more detail about, well, it was this, this employee was there for this many hours, and they had a problem with this particular piece of equipment at that store, which took an extra hour, and then we went back, you know, and talked to the store owner and so forth. That was a long, I'm trying to, I don't want to call the store owner out, but it's been a long time since we had a complaint from the store owner. For the most part, now they understand this is what they're getting, and then we're billing directly now based on the time invoiced by the state, so, there, because there was an argument a while back by some store owners that, you know, should just be all the costs divided by the establishments, and so we've been down that road a couple of times, but we could probably get just more information if that's something of interest. But essentially, it's whatever time they record and spend at that establishment, it's directly billed back to them, and the city gets charged $4,000, in this case was charged $4,000.
That's great clarity, appreciate that. And I think my comment was more on the clarification, not necessarily implying that the state's doing anything wrong, but.
No, I understand.
What is the standard, and kind of how is that broken down? It does make sense that QuickTrip is, or any business for that matter that would be larger would get charged more for the time being taken, let alone a smaller business that they're going to be there for a lot less time, so, thanks.
Okay, I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of consent agenda item number five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, Mr. Dow, you pulled number six, too.
Yep, and in number six, I'm not against this one either, but I'm curious about how Public Surplus Online Auction Service became the selling site for our second-hand items we're trying to sell.
When we first went to online auction services, there probably weren't very many available, but we met with Public Surplus, and we've met with them quite a few times over the years. They seem to provide a really good service that a lot of cities use, and people know to go there. If you've been on that site, you can pick the agency, there's a lot of cities in Wisconsin, and then, I know, it's just worked out really well for us.
But, you know, I look at the reviews on every site I use, and, you know, I can't go to any auction site without seeing negative feedback, so that's why I'm asking that question. Do we actually have a competitive way of determining who should be the auction service for the city?
We have not done any research on that in recent years, so.
Maybe we should consider that for something for the future, but with that, I move approval of consent agenda item number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Morrissey, you pulled number seven.
Pulled number seven, there's two things I'd like to discuss and see if my fellow council members would be in agreement with regard to the naming right policy in the back. The first one is under naming, the current policy reads, "The permanent name agreed upon by the city of River Falls and the donor via a resolution to a given landmark." I'd like to take a little bit more control in the city and say that the permanent name given upon by the city of River Falls at its sole discretion with input from the donor, it would be one of my thoughts there. We want to hear from the donor, we certainly don't want to exclude them, but I think we still want to retain, my thought is to retain that authority. So, that's one resolution, or one change I'd like to make. The other one, I mentioned Veterans Park earlier, and I don't want to get confused with the memorials and the tributes, especially with regard to the requirement of being deceased for five years. I would like us, under memorials and tributes, to add another bullet point that says something to the effect that we exclude bricks or memorialized donations in Veterans Park. Frankly, there are people who are still alive today that have bricks that were put in there. I think it's a minor issue, I don't think it's going to happen a whole lot, but I do think it's good, as long as we've opened up the naming rights policy, I think it's good for us to just memorialize that, if you will, that's probably a bad choice of words, but to recognize that in the naming policy. So, I'd be interested to hear anybody else's thoughts on that, or I'll make a motion and see if those fly, I guess.
Well, I think, to your second point, I think a memorial would suggest that the person has been deceased, that they are not a living person because it's a memorial.
Yeah, maybe that's the wrong spot for it.
So, I think that distinction is built in there already, that you don't need to say, you know, you don't need to have that caveat of an exception for a living person, as far as I would understand a memorial.
Yeah, maybe I'm in the wrong spot there, but, you know, under donation or some other, some other place, minor donations, you know, a brick down at Veterans Park, for instance, is $250, so that would fall under minor donations. I think somewhere in the, in the naming rights policy, I'd like to see us just say, this excludes bricks and memorialized recognition at Veterans Park, and I'd be willing to listen to where you think it might go.
So, maybe under minor donations, you could put in that caveat of not.
Yeah, we can move it to minor donations, then, but just the recognition of it is what I'm more interested in.
Anybody else have anything about this? Otherwise, yeah, just making a.
Okay, I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a motion to amend the naming rights to say, "The permanent name agreed upon by the city of River Falls at its sole discretion with input from the donor via a resolution to land, to a given landmark."
Second.
Question or comment? Is this, this won't be a problem with anything? Dan?
No, Scott was just asking, I think this is a minor change, and.
Okay.
It's a policy, I don't think you're going to need to go back and do a.
Renote it.
Another notice in the first reading.
Okay, okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll take an amendment on the original resolution.
And then under minor.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion to amend, under minor donations, just add another sentence that says, "This excludes bricks and memorialized donations in Veterans Park."
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I'll take a motion on the original resolution.
Oh, we didn't make a motion on the, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I make a motion, we approve a resolution regarding naming rights policy as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to ordinance, 2018-14, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of River Falls for the year of 2019, and this is the first reading, and our Assistant City Administrator Julie Bergstrom will give us a little taste.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight. I really apologize to the Boy Scouts, though. This is going to be really dry. Anyway, I'd like to share some highlights of the proposed 2019-2020 budget. We, city does a biennial budget, and is prepared over several months with the budget team and staff and department heads. We feel this budget continues to support the strengths of the city and the priorities of the city council and the community, so, we will move on here. The city council has seen this slide probably five, six times by now, but we really like it. It shows that the basis of the budget and all the planning comes from the city's strategic plan, which was updated last summer, I think it was last summer, and it flows through to the work plan, to the fiscal plan, to the business plan, CIP, which was also approved last summer, and finally comes to the budget. Once the budget is prepared, we pretty much know what the priorities of the city are at city council, and we can go ahead and make those choices and prepare the budget with appropriate staffing priorities and the level of funding for the, for the city services. Tonight, the council is reviewing the first reading of the budget. It's an ordinance, so it requires two readings and a public hearing that is scheduled for November 13th. Because the state of Wisconsin does not, I shouldn't say doesn't allow a two-year budget, doesn't recognize that you can do a levy for two years, we're asking the council to approve a levy for 2019 in a couple of weeks, and then another levy about a year from now for the 2020 budget. But this, this budget is for $91 million over the two-year period. City staff is charged with managing that budget over that time period, and the, I guess one other thing on there, the proposed levy for 2019 is $6.641 million. This year, we had some budget themes. One of them was including additional staffing that would have a direct impact on citizens and on the public. This budget includes two additional police officers, one in 2019, and one scheduled for mid-year in 2020. There were two public works positions, one a mechanic, one for the Parks Department, and then also an additional fire position that was grant-funded, that's included in the budget at this point, and two electrical apprentice positions that were already hired but were added to the budget for 19 and 20. Other priorities of the city is to continue to support the infrastructure of the city by maintenance, keeping up the maintenance that we've already provided up to this point, streets, forestry, parks, certainly the utilities, and then also carrying out the projects that were included in the CIP, in the capital improvement plan. This is a graph of the expenses for the city budget for the two-year period. You can see that about 50% of that is coming from the enterprise funds, which are mostly the electric water sewer, stormwater funds. We also had, or of the, I'm sorry, of that utility fund, about $20 million is strictly related to the purchase of power from WPPI, so it's a significant amount of that budget is just a check going to WPPI. Capital project funds vary based on the budget, some years it's higher than others, this year is quite high because of Glen Park and a lot of other projects that are included. And debt service is another area that would vary. So, how do we pay for this budget? Because most of the budget, half of the budget is utility funds, charges for services is the main source of revenue for those items. Property taxes, 14%. People do think that property taxes pay for everything, but no, they don't, but it is a significant portion. And also, intergovernmental funds pay for about 11%, and that's state child revenues, transportation aids, grants from counties, and that sort of thing, and other partners. So, we did include some capital investments for the city. Glen Park is the major one, of course. We had a grant from FEMA for $640,000, so that helped on that end, and then also there was long-term financing done this summer to pay for Glen Park. Division Street Interchange is 85% funded by the State of Wisconsin and developers, so a significant portion of that also is not on the, on the local taxpayer. The North Interceptor Sewer would be funded by sewer, some funded by the sewer fund, some by tax increment, I think, I think we have a little bit in there. This is a rerouting and construction of a new sewer from the St. Croix Street, and will involve removing of a lift station, and then upgrading another sewer to the south of the, of St. Croix Street. And then, as Mike Noreen mentioned, AMI, Advanced Metering Infrastructure, that is in the two-year budget, so you'll be seeing and hearing a lot more about that, and it's a significant investment in that, too. And the South Fork Subtransformer is an electrical item, is 30 years old, and it's scheduled for replacement. One of the reasons that we have some flexibility this year is the success of our tax increment districts, TID districts, particularly these Sterling Ponds. Corporate Park has grown so much faster than the other parks that we've developed, and it's been very successful, even in the couple, three years. So, our increment value for tax increment is $63 million. Five years ago, it was about $20 million, less than that, it was like 40, 40 million, so, it's grown a lot. And because of the success of the TIDS, we're able to repay the interest to other funds that have been advanced, also repay advances, and use some of that funding for other things such as staffing and other priorities of the council. This is a little hard to read, but it's the history of the tax levy, and this is not just the general fund, it's not just police, fire, and streets, it includes library, debt service, and any funds needed for capital. So, it's about a 5% increase average each year, that we have had some growth in there to offset some of that. I think 2018 was a big year where the city, city's market value, equalized value, reached an excess of $1 billion. For a city our size, that's very good, it shows a good investment in the city, strong market values, and then it is also partially due to the tax increment funds, districts. Where does your property tax dollar go? City sends out the bill, has the city of River Falls on it, it used to have my name on it, I don't know if it still does, I don't think so. But anyway, it's not all coming to the city, you know, 50%, 40%, I'm sorry, it's going to the school district now, 30%, 34% for the city, and the county gets a little bit. So, it's confusing to the people, to the property taxpayer, when they, it just kind of says the city on there, but we try to educate them with this, this information that it's not all going to the city. So, last week was the first, let's see, I think it was Thursday, the first day where we could get the final assessed values for the city, including manufacturing. So, putting all those numbers together, putting in the tax increment numbers, we can estimate what a property tax. we can estimate what a, a property tax bill will look like for, just for the city portion. We don't have the school district levies, we don't have the county levies, so we could, we could estimate the city portion. And when you put all those numbers together, we thought we should take another look at, at looking at expenses and maybe make some changes. This was a little different than our expectations that we had when we were putting together the workshops and also the fiscal plan that you met on earlier. So since we have a little bit of time between now and the November thirteenth, we probably will go back, look at some expenses, look at some other revenues, and bring back a slightly different scenario on the actual tax bill. And I think I only have a slide that's hard to read. We have a budget at the library, we have one at City Hall. It's also posted on the city's website, if anyone wants to dig that far and find it. You can give us a call at City Hall. The administration would be happy to, to help you find a copy, answer any questions you have. And between now and the public hearing, we'd love to have some feedback and input from either the council, public staff, anyone on that. So I'd like to thank the, the staff for working on that, Keri and Jason and Brant and finance staff, Tracy. So there was a lot of input into that, and I appreciate all the help. So I can answer any questions that you might have?
Questions?
I think you only lost two Cub Scouts that fell asleep out there.
I know. What a bad night to come to a meeting. So, sorry about that.
Thanks, Julie. Okay, next move on to a resolution approving purchase agreement between, with the Marcel Family Limited Partnership. And I think Scott's gonna talk to us a little bit.
It went away, huh? Mr. Morris said, I think you want to call him Boy Scouts. Unless you want us to start calling you.
I'm sorry.
We don't want to call you county board member.
Oh.
Guys.
Good evening, mayor and council. I wanted to provide a presentation on a resolution that you're asked to approve in the packet. Resolution that you're asked to approve is, approves a purchase agreement with Marcel Family Limited Partnership for the property at twenty-eight fifteen Prairie Drive. This property is approximately three acres and includes approximately twenty thousand square foot building, which has housed, historically housed the River Towns or the newspaper. I'll talk a little bit about the current police headquarters, the building at twenty-eight fifteen, and then some initial cost-benefit analysis completed that allows us to recommend the purchase. Existing police department was constructed in nineteen fifty-eight and was remodeled in two thousand nine. In two thousand nine, we were finishing up the city hall and occupying the city hall and moved city hall personnel from that facility. There was some demolition and reconstruction on that site with the emphasis being, we spent about a million dollars total between police and fire remodel there, and the hope was to get another ten years out of the existing building. The existing, let's see, I believe that's the footprint of the police department, not the building itself, but the police department footprint is about fifteen thousand square feet, and that's on two levels, so ground floor and basement. We've gone through the public safety feasibility studies, but I want to point out a few of the things that led us to the decision that we needed a new facility for, or a different facility for the police and, and fire departments, and has led us down that path of looking for ways to finance and, and put that into place. Fifteen thousand square feet provides a pretty tight working and gathering and meeting spaces for staff. Interview rooms are not isolated or secured, and, and there really isn't much of a public anything in that building. It's, you know, it's, most places it's a vestibule size, but it's our lobby and, and entrance and customer service window all in one. You know, there's a, I guess before I point, I want to say that it's not just these three items. I'm just pointing out a few of the items to kind of remind you of the study, but there's a full study that talks about many deficiencies of the building, some of which that we won't discuss publicly because there's, you know, that we have safety issues and that, that we, we're looking to for officer safety and public safety in the facilities. But essentially, the building's outlasted its useful life, and it's time for us to move on. The council's already approved that, and so we're looking at other options. So the council has placed in the capital improvement plan, and we had preliminary put in our budget and fiscal planning, the construction of a seven point five million dollar new greenfield police department. We've looked at a couple of sites. The council approved seven acre purchase in the River Falls Industrial Park that would potentially serve as a home for the police and/or fire station. In addition, we're still, we still had it under consideration in addition to the city hall facility for the police department. The, in the course of evaluating different sites for different clients in my, my economic development role, had the opportunity to visit the building on, on many occasions, had occasion to do that again while we were doing some analysis in the police department and had discussions with some of you regarding our concern about not being able to complete the police and fire station within a reasonable time, given our fiscal constraints. So we began examination of the building at twenty-eight fifteen Prairie Drive for a future police station. It was constructed in two thousand three, it's on approximately three acres, and the building is approximately twenty-two thousand square feet. The benefits of this building compared to a new construction is the operational and functional needs of the police would be met. And what I mean by that specifically is originally the construction estimates to meet the space needs analysis for the future police department put the budget for a new police building between nine and thirteen million dollars. And as you know, we struggled with that because there wasn't something that fit within our fiscal plan. So the council made a tough decision that we wanted to go forward with a new, new police station. We needed to abandon the existing station and construct something new, but we set a budget of seven point five million dollars on that. Based on our estimates for cost for new construction, that, that means a space program about twenty thousand square feet total. The space program recommended about twenty-five thousand. So we knew if we built a new building, we were going to sacrifice on space considerably because we simply couldn't afford to build the recommended space program within the fiscal plan. By purchasing a new building and doing modifications and potentially a small addition to it, we can better meet the operational space program that was recommended by the consultants that was worked out from the department and also the city council that we knew we wouldn't be able to do with a new construction. It provides a comfortable work environment with secure parking and ample room for future growth. So we renewed, re-reviewed cost scenarios. We did so with the Wald Architectural Group, who did our study and was working, likely to work with us on our new construction. Constructing that new police building, as I mentioned, we put a hard budget of seven point five million dollars on it. Does not include the cost acquisition of the, the property. We, going forward with this option that's recommended this evening, we believe is, has a four point five million dollar cost estimate. That would be remo, purchasing the building at the price indicated, and then using a budget of three million dollars to remodel and/or put a small addition onto the building. There's considerable cost savings involved in that kind of move, as you've, you've seen in the fiscal plan before. If you look at the annual payments, that, you usually do a twenty-year borrowing on a public facility of this nature. We expected that new construction was going to cost right around six hundred thousand per year in the annual debt service, and that's a twenty-year cost. Twenty-year commitment by the community to do so. On the high-end reconstruction estimates, we think it'll be about three hundred fifty thousand. You notice that we expect to have those costs incurred sooner, so there obviously is a cost, time, and money that's involved. But generally speaking, if you just take the twenty, two twenty years and line them up, you have an annualized savings of about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is almost five million dollars of life alone. That significantly alters our fiscal plan and provides some additional flexibility for taking care of other needs. There's other things pointed out in the, in the memorandum. Staff has worked through two or three iterations already of space planning specifically on this building. We've done a couple sites visits, including with mechanical engineers and architects and our own maintenance staff. So we've done a fair amount of due diligence before proceeding. On your behalf, I signed a purchase agreement on this property for one point five million, allowing us the ability then to review that formal council meeting, upcoming formal council meeting, which is tonight. If the council approves the purchase agreement, as it's signed, then essentially you're checking off one of the contingency items on our purchase agreement. And then we have approximately ninety days from the time that we sign that purchase agreement, I signed on your behalf, that purchase agreement, to go through with the rest of our due diligence and make a final purchase. The resolution does authorize me to proceed with that purchase, assuming that the due diligence checks out. It is within the council's purview, if you'd like to add additional caveats or require things to come back to you at different points if you like to. I would recommend, based on the timing involved and the, the value we can get from the, the building purchase, that you strongly consider the resolution as is. This is something that I have worked with the police chief on, and something that he's in agreement is, makes some sense for us, for the department. The three points I guess I want to emphasize in closing is by shifting to an existing building model, there's a few trade-offs. The trade-offs seem fairly minimal, given the positive nature of the other things that we get. The existing building allows us to move to more closely match the needs analysis that was originally discussed with the council and the department. You know, what is our future needs for space, and how do we want to set up the department of the future? This existing building is going to allow us to much more closely, frankly, almost entirely, match our space needs that we put in that, that study. It's gonna allow us to open sooner, although that doesn't mean we'll be opening tomorrow or within three months. But it's certainly, instead of an occupancy sometime late in twenty twenty-three, or fall of twenty twenty-three, there's between one and two years that would allow us to move up, and that's even with taking a good amount of due diligence, taking, taking good efforts for planning and working with the department and the architects to kind of plan the space and the remodel and work through that. So more closely aligns with the space needs, allows us to open sooner, and as you saw, has significant positive financial impacts on the city. This really puts us in a position to start having that conversation about the other public facility, including the possibility of lining both of those facilities up in a shorter window, which would allow us to abandon the Second Street facility, potentially opening that site up for future development. If all of those things came to line, and, and there's no promise or, or expectation by staff at this point that we can tell you they absolutely will, if we could do the police and fire facilities within the, the budget framework of what we laid out just for the police department, it would have the additional benefit of opening up Second Street for future development or redevelopment, private development of that site. And it also would put the seven acre site that we purchased in the industrial park back into play for us to think about what uses we'd use for that. On its own, the, the purchase of the property just for the police department without any of those other things is recommended.
I'm very much in favor of this, but I, I have something I want to point out to the rest of my council members. I appreciate the timeliness, the cost-effectiveness, and there's something else that you didn't mention tonight. It's the software that's actually used by the police department. It actually works better with St. Croix because the dispatch and the communication is there. So this is a very good move for many different reasons.
Sean's point, that's something that I, I was in favor of in planning meetings, I don't know, four years ago, five, six years ago, utilizing St. Croix County Dispatch as our main police dispatch, just the efficiencies and the towers and the extra support that they can provide us. I definitely am in favor on that point. If I may ask a couple other things. That Second Street emergency building that we currently use for the fire department and police building, has there been any developer interest in that facility? Like any tire kickers about what we're gonna do and what options they would have in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Major? I mean, not just, has there been any major interest in that beyond just tire kicking? And how soon would people want to come in? Is this stuff that, I know we can't go too far into it, but is there?
Yeah, I mean, I think primarily what we've seen is there's not much awareness that that site is even available. So it's, it's become more, more known to people as we've approved the police station, new construction of police station. Then we have had a couple developers ask us the question of, well, how soon is fire gonna get out to? But again, keeping in mind that we had not planned to exit the Second Street building till twenty twenty-three. So for most developers, that's too far down the road for them to really put a lot of effort into. I, I suspect an accelerated plan for police and fire would bring a lot more attention from the development community and probably require us to think about doing an RFQ process where we can control the, the interest, because I think it'll be heavy.
Couple other things that I just wanted to tack on there. Just to kind of summarize, our budget that we are looking at for our future public safety building for just police would have been about seven and a half million dollars. The purchase of this building, correct me if I'm wrong, is about, it is one point five million dollars.
Correct.
And we're proposing a one point five to three million dollar rehab.
Yeah, and I think in the.
For a total of about four and a half?
Yeah, in the memorandum, I think the, the debt service table reflects the high, the low is a two million dollar remodel, so say a three and a half million dollar project, and the, the high end of the debt service is a three million dollar remodel, so that's four and a half million.
One last thing I asked this of Gordy last time, that with this option came up, did you get a chance to tour the facility?
I did.
As our police chief.
And I really like it.
As our police chief and your experience, this is gonna adequately serve our community for a police department for years to come?
Oh, it'll more than adequately serve our community.
It's all new, thank you.
I believe this is a really good facility in great shape, and I expect this facility to last for, for decades.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott?
Just a point of information, I, I understand and appreciate the sentiment regarding dispatch, but I would, I would caution the council not to make a decision based on the assumption that dispatch will fundamentally change, even though there's obviously some discussions we've had about that. But different address of the police station doesn't necessarily mean that the counties agree with structural changes to dispatch. So that certainly is one of the pros that was listed on the early site, site evaluations, but it's probably a whole different resolution and, and memorandum for you.
I'll, I'll throw that out there, that that was my personal, personal opinion, not necessarily the voice of the council, so there you have it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the red.
No, this is just first reading.
Well, this is first reading.
Yep.
Oh. Well, can't we skip?
Mayor, this, no, this is approval.
Resolution approved.
This is a resolution, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I was still, I'm thinking one before this. I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution for the purchase agreement for twenty-eight fifteen Prairie Drive.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry.
That's all right. You've been gone for a while. You're rusty, that's all right.
Okay, next we'll go on to administrator's report. Anybody's got any questions for Scott, or Scott's got anything for us, or anybody's got anything for anything?
Mayor and council, I just want to remind you all that elections are ongoing. In-person early voting began yesterday and runs through Friday. I think we're over three hundred now for the two days. People are encouraged, you'd like to do early in-person voting to do so as soon as they're able to. You can do that all the way through this week, and we're accommodating, I'm sorry, next week. We're accommodating folks with exten- I'm sorry, next week. We're accommodating folks with extended hours at City Hall for this two-week period. Hours are 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. A reminder that the election's on November 6th, and you may not in-person vote on November 5th. So the Monday before election is essentially a cooling off period for the, the clerk's offices across the state. And so you, you may not vote in person on that day. So if you want to do in-person, you have to do it by the Friday before that. We are handling heavy volumes of absentee ballot requests, mailed absentee ballot requests, and we certainly will have ample staffing at the polling places. Reminder that if you're unsure of where to vote or wanting more information, you can visit www.myvote, M-Y-V-O-T-E dot W-I dot gov. There was some changes in locations for polling places. From the last time folks voted in River Falls, we did, we are no longer using the Hoffman Park Storm Shelter as a voting location. So those who did, who voted there, District 3 wards 6 through 8 will be in the City Hall Training Room, which is the room on this floor of City Hall. District 1 wards 1 through 4, 15, who were in the main level of the meeting room at the library, will be in the now lower level, the larger meeting room. And District 1 Ward 5, who were in the City Hall Training Room, will now be in the upper main level meeting room of the library. Rest assured that we'll assist voters in getting to the right polling place. And again, if people have any question about where they can vote, they can vote in, in person from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at City Hall in the next couple weeks, or they can give us a call and we'll help get them in the right place. With that, I'll take any other questions.
Okay, move on to comptroller's report for September.
The comptroller's report for September 2018. General fund revenues through the end of September were $7,750,035, or 77% of budgeted. Revenues in September includes $73,447 for the final payment from the Rural Fire Association for 2018 service and $16,616 in building permits. Expenditures for the same period were $7,271,309, or 72% of budgeted, for a net of revenues over expenditures of $478,726.
Thanks, Diane. Next we'll have a proclamation celebrating the 50th year anniversary of WRFW FM radio, and Diane will read that for us.
At your request, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the University of Wisconsin River Falls is celebrating the 50th anniversary of its student-run radio station, WRFW, 88.7 FM, founded in 1968 by several visionaries who understood the value of having a campus and community media outlet. Whereas in 1998, WRFW joined the Wisconsin Public Radio Network and became its far western Wisconsin affiliate airing news and talk programming from WPR's Ideas Network. Whereas, in addition to serving students and the community with news and music, the station offers hands-on training for journalism and communications students. Whereas WRFW alumni will observe the 50th anniversary on November 3rd, 2018, with day-long activities for alumni in the UWRF and River Falls community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Dan Toland of the City of River Falls, do proclaim the day of November 3rd, 2018, as WRFW Day in the City of River Falls, in recognition of its rich history and significant contributions to the lives of River Falls area students and community members, given under my hand and seal of the City of River Falls this 23rd day of October, 2018.
Great.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.